Started here for our six o'clock start five minutes ago. And we got, we got the water discussion started already, but that's just one aspect of this topic. Thank you very much, everybody, for joining me. I'm Deschutes County Commissioner Tony DeBoe, and we do have a quorum of our board here tonight. We want to thank Representative Zika for being here. Well, one order of business, we're going to figure out who's on the phone. Learn about this for just a moment. So Sharon, I'm going to mention who I think may be online already. I heard Deputy, or Detective Dustin Miller, Gary Braceley, and probably Hunter Newbauer is there. Can those three people just confirm they've joined us?
Oh, no.
Yeah, Dustin Miller is there.
Thank you. Hunter Newbauer, are you there?
Gary Braceley.
Gary Braceley.
Okay.
Is Hunter there? Maybe not. And then is there anybody else on the line? That's what I was trying to get the specific names out. Okay. Well, at this time, we confirmed Dustin Miller, Gary Braceley, and on the line, and we're not sure if anybody else. So a little bit of technology rolling tonight. So the commissioners are all going to take a moment and share our thoughts. This is starting a new cannabis advisory panel appointed by the commission for the community with the guidance of our state legislature relative to the tax dollars associated with cannabis production in Deschutes County. So that's the context of how we got here. Couple of thoughts real quick. We have, I've been through this whole thing. Measure 91 was the beginning of it. We filled this room up with land use discussions many times. We saw two very distinct sides of the conversation in this room and in the community. And as I say, I remember Commissioner Chang came on and was it early this year, I said something about marijuana or something. He said PTSD from the marijuana meetings or whatever. But it is, it's kind of like that. It's been a rough, a rough road for some of the items we've had to deal with here. But it's many years later now, and we're welcoming discussion at the table at this time. So with that, I'll hand it off to Commissioner Dare.
Yes, and I want to thank Representative Zika for coming tonight, and thank you, all of you for coming tonight. And I think Jason's supposed to be on the phone. But this is really important, and I realize we're not, we're not talking about time, place, and manner, but we are having this group, and we need to meet quarterly in order to get our funding because, you know, the state went on a moratorium, and we matched that moratorium, but somehow they took away our money. So anyhow, this is important, and I so appreciate input and feedback from everyone here. It's a great Monday night, and thank you. Isn't there a football game somewhere?
Football.
Yeah.
Mr. Chang.
Hi, everyone. Phil Chang, Deschutes County Commissioner. I also just wanted to thank everyone for being here and for participating in this panel. My hope is that this panel is just one, one piece of starting a new chapter of, you know, relationships and policy in our community on, on these issues that we can, in this new chapter, we can treat legal businesses fairly and professionally. We can crack down severely on black market production and black market distribution of cannabis, and that we can prevent and treat substance abuse disorders in our community. And these revenues that we're here to talk about today represent a great opportunity to work on those goals. And that, that's my hope, that, that's my hope for this panel is that we can work together to accomplish those three, three things.
So this being the first meeting of, of this effort, as I say, the Board of Commissioners is in attendance and is participating, but this is going to be a committee of the community that is going to be advised, that is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. These are open, honest discussions. Communication is, is advocated for here. We want to make sure we're talking to each other. And as I say, this is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. So even if we are here in the future, we won't be in this same scenario. We may be either sitting at a table or sitting in the audience as commissioners, you know, and possibly given some thoughts or feedback, but it's your committee. And I want to thank you very much for participating. So this is getting us going here. So at this time, we do have Representative Jack Zika in the room, and Representative Jacob, Jason Crop may be available on the phone. So let me see if Jason's available, just technology wise, to see if he's on the phone. Representative Crop. Okay, well, he had his chance. So thank you very much.
Right.
Yeah, it was kind of his bill that got us started.
He very much wanted to participate. I mean, I spoke to him earlier today, and he was planning, he was, he said that people were working on getting him another call-in number because the one he had didn't work. So I, I.
We've had so many issues when it comes to links and numbers within the last week. I don't know what's going on, but yeah, things have been really difficult to, to connect. I don't know if it's a Zoom thing or what, you know. But I can take it.
It's the Russians.
It's the Russians. So thank you all for being here. I really appreciate this inaugural meeting, and I'm happy to be here and kind of give you our thoughts and the process of what we, we did, our thinking process for the bill. We definitely wanted the industry to be present. We wanted the public to be present. We wanted safety, the sheriff's office to be present, and of course, water to be present. We wanted all of these issues to, to come together and, and do an advisory panel for the commissioners to let you know on what your thoughts are on these funds coming in. When they drafted Measure 110, they never thought of somebody or a county opting out. That just didn't, just never was a thought for them. So when Deschutes County passed that measure and opted out in the rural areas, it kind of threw everything for a loop. And so AOC said that they never intended for a county not to receive their money. So we came together, and we were able to craft a piece of legislation that not only now puts money back into Deschutes County for having the industry here and growers here, but also in case if a county was on the fence of doing the same thing that Deschutes County, because there are counties out there that were, you know, talking about it. So this now puts in protection for those counties as well. So that was kind of our thought process, and we really wanted to have the discussion and so the commissioners knew what they, you know, what the public thought and where they thought these funds should go. So we really wanted your input involved, and so I appreciate everybody being here. And I'll be happy to answer any questions as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any difference on the phone? I guess we haven't heard anybody has that.
No.
Representative Crop texted me, and he said he thinks he's still waiting for a new call-in number.
I, I sent him a text. Do you have?
Good. Well, let's work on that.
I can work on that while you guys.
Wonderful. So at this time, Peter can take it from there, and we also want to do some introductions tonight, but let's have Peter work.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. I'm Peter Gatazki, Deschutes County's Community Development Director. Let's introduce the staff that's here. I'll, I'll turn it over to Nick if you want to introduce yourself, and then we can kind of work, skip Sharon and head to Tanya maybe.
I'm Nick Leatt, County Administrator.
Let's, Tanya, will you introduce yourself as our supporting?
Sure. I'm Tanya Saltzman, I'm the Senior Planner with the county. I'll be your secretary today.
Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel.
Great. And we have Sharon, our ace in the hole there, Administrative Assistant. Sharon, thanks for being here. And I don't know, some of you may have had a chance to meet Tracy Griffin, who was here kind of helping set it up and prepare the food. It looks like we may.
Is this Representative Crop?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Jason Crop.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us. So I'll take it over. This is Commissioner DeBoe, and we're, this is the start of the meeting. We're working through the technology, obviously. Hopefully you can hear me well, but you could, you're, we can hear you very well in the room now. There's a microphone on a speakerphone. And at this time, it's kind of the introduction of the Cannabis Advisory Panel, what it looks like from your point of view. So please take it away.
Commissioner DeBoe, I'm sorry, were you, were you asking me to speak?
Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you so much, everybody, for being here this evening, and thanks for staff for tackling the technology challenges. Sounds like it's been quite a day at the county offices. I'm Jason Crop. I'm State Representative for House 654, which includes most of Bend, and I want to thank the commissioners for having me this evening. And I want to thank the new committee members of the Cannabis Advisory Committee for participating in this project and being willing to give of yourself and your time to help the county with this endeavor. So I'll just give a little bit of background. Myself, I helped create Hospital 3295, which led to the creation of this panel. And I think part of my starting point was it seemed strange to me that revenue that was being generated by cannabis industry here in our county, none of that revenue was staying in the, in the county. And as I had discussions with multiple people throughout the state who had worked on some of the original cannabis revenue legislation, nobody had really anticipated the situation that we find that on the circumstances that exist here in Deschutes County in this bill. And some part was affixed to sort of unanticipated set of circumstances. And I, one of the things I found was really interesting about the conversations I was having with people throughout the state that were involved in the cannabis industry was how do you have meaningful and productive conversations within the community about this emerging, growing industry? And I had interesting conversations with people from throughout the state about how their counties and their municipalities structure some of these conversations, and part of the feedback that we got from other counties and other cities helped us shape this legislation and shape the framework for the Cannabis Advisory Committee. You know, in some respects, there's a high level of flexibility that structures into these committees so that each committee can sort of address the individual circumstances of their home and their home county. But the basic framework is make, use this committee to have meaningful discussions and make recommendations to our county commissioners about how to use marijuana revenue, how to tackle some of the public safety implications, and how to address other issues regarding production and businesses involved cannabis. You know, and I will say the one thing that really spoke to me was the public safety standpoint, the public safety issues. And, you know, prior to being this state representative, I was a deputy district attorney in Deschutes County, and before that, I was a public defender. And what I was having a number of discussions from a variety of stakeholders that were expressing similar concerns and wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to make sure there wasn't underage use of cannabis, and to make sure that we were providing assistance and help to people who were struggling with substance abuse. And I heard that from a variety of stakeholders. And I would say one of the other things that spoke to me about public safety is I had experienced when I was a prosecutor prosecuting people who had vandalized and stolen from legal cannabis businesses. And so I am hopeful that we are going to get some interesting conversations and insights about how to increase public safety here in our community. You know, I, as I helped push this legislation, I, my sort of main goals for the Cannabis Advisory Committee were, I thought, were relatively straightforward, and I'm hopeful it is going to be pretty successful. One is if there's sources of tension and conflict in our community around the cannabis industry, that this advisory panel is a structured place to have productive conversations. And two, how do we, as a community, maximize the use of cannabis revenue for the, for the maximum benefits for our home? So I'm really grateful for the county commission for paneling this committee, and especially appreciative to all the people who, who put their names in, who want to be part of this process. I'm really looking forward to this panel, and I am going to be paying close attention to the recommendations that come out of this. I think that this committee has a ton of potential to help move our community forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us online tonight. Sorry about the technology. So, yeah.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add one thing to what Jason said. It brought up a memory, and it's, we have, we have drug cartels here. You know, they were just in Southern Oregon, and it's really bad. Congressman Cliff Mens was just there. You know, they're really trying to crack down on things like that. And if you remember back in September 3rd, I just pulled it up, but we had one here in Central Oregon, too. So the Mexican cartel's here. So that's, that should be a piece of this, to try to discuss that and make sure that, you know, what do we do, or what, what safety measures need to be done, you know, things like that. So Jason hit on, I just wanted to focus in on that piece because it's, it's now here, too.
I just had a conversation this morning with Rob Bovent, who is the legal for Association of Oregon, you know, counties, and he said there's actually nine counties, Polk, Yamhill, besides Jackson and Josephine, Klamath, I don't know, it must be Jefferson, too. Anyway, he said it's, it's nine counties, and it is only getting worse, and he is hoping that he can get ahead of it with this next legislative session. So that was, that was an interesting conversation. And we went on the cartel bust with the 49 greenhouses. Yeah.
Wow.
It was, yeah, everyone said why did, how did it get, you know, be allowed to stand so long? It was using a lot of water.
Okay, back to Peter, and we're working down our agenda here a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to Sharon Keith, our Executive Assistant for establishing that technology, to bring in Representative Crop and Detective Miller and Hunter Newbauer. So I have the privilege of just kind of facilitating the meeting to get us through tonight's agenda. Just wanted to do a couple of things, just give you an overview of what we're going to be discussing today, and then we'll, we'll transition into the opportunity for this panel to share your thoughts, your, certainly your introductory remarks, kind of what you hope to achieve and accomplish, and some of the issues that you would like discussed as part of this panel as it convenes over into 2022. And Tanya Saltzman is the Senior Planner. We wanted to, to capture those issues or themes that you think are important for the community as part of this panel. So that's, that's forthcoming. So we're going to do a round of introductions, and then we will respectfully have a conversation about, and a nomination hopefully, to elect a chairperson for this panel. Afterwards, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, is going to debrief you on public meeting and conflicts of interest law. You are a public body, and there's certain aspects procedurally that we need to make you aware of, and that's, there's some information in your packet that I'm sure you probably read or glanced over, and that gets into much more specificity. But Adam has, has given that presentation several times, and we are your resources, you know. So if you have questions about public meetings or whatnot, you are always welcome to reach out to any one of us here to get the information that you need. We did set aside just a few minutes, to the extent that there was anybody who has found them, found them, found their ability to call in, but if anyone had, we had Zoom, and someone was participating remotely or had decided to come in this evening, it's a public meeting. We wanted to make sure that the public had opportunities to express their viewpoints. And then as we close the meeting, it'll be talking about next steps and really getting into the more of the substantive issues that this panel will discuss, as noted by both our state representatives and the Board of County Commissioners. That will occur starting in January of 2022. We haven't established the meeting date or time, but we will in the next several weeks to make sure it's on your calendar, and we can have a quorum. So unless there's any questions from, from the panel, what I'd like to do is maybe it makes the best sense to go to our, those that are on the phone line first. Maybe we start with either, why don't we start with Hunter Newbauer? Hunter, if you can, we have a good connection here. If you want to introduce yourself, talk about your, your interest in, in, in the panel and some of the, the topics that you would like to discuss moving forward into 2022. And like I said, we're going to, we're going to note them on a flip chart, but we'll kick off with you, and then Detective Miller, if, if you would follow suit, and then we'll, we'll go around the table here in the office.
Gary Braceley is online, too.
Oh, and Gary Braceley, excuse me. Thank you.
So I don't ever, is Hunter there?
I don't think he checked, have he checked in?
Never heard of him, yeah.
Oh, Hunter was not online. Okay. So Dustin Miller, are you available?
He was here. So Detective?
So I am here. If you guys can hear me.
Yes.
The problem is, I was trying to explain to the person who texted me the number, the distant voices are really hard, so I'm catching just bits and pieces. It's cutting out a bunch, so I'm having a hard time following, but I can, I can assist wherever. The people that called in, like Mr. Crop, it's very, very easy to hear him. So what are you asking me to cover, real quick?
So this is time for introductions. Thanks for joining, and it's just your personal introduction. This is the group getting to know each other.
Okay. So my name is Dustin Miller. I work for the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. I'm a detective. It's part of the illegal marijuana enforcement team. I've been a detective or a deputy for 15 years with this agency. I've gotten an opportunity to work all kinds of things through law enforcement, but I've devoted a large portion of my career towards controlled substances, different things like that. I was given the opportunity to have this position here about two years ago, and I've been focusing solely on cannabis since then. I've attended a lot of, some of our meetings we've had with the public and with local business owners that have dispensaries and different businesses in town that are around the legal marijuana market, and we do, we have a good community that, that does things right. And, and what I'm here to do is kind of, my position is just to kind of weed out a little bit of the black, black market so that our people that are doing things correctly and legally can function and operate legally, assisting them, but then also trying to curb the black market side of it that we've seen over the last couple of years kind of come into our community and influence our taxpaying citizens and just with neighbors and different things like that that are impacted by some of the black market side, or I guess the illegal activities. So that's, that's my position, and I'm, I'm willing to help and talk about what I'm experiencing to anybody that needs to know or will hear. And so if I can shed some light on that, I will.
Great. Hopefully you can, you can hear me okay, Detective Miller, but thank you for those opening remarks. Gary Braceley, would you do the same and offer those introductions and perspectives and some of the issues you'd like discussed as, as this panel heads into 2022?
Oh, yeah, sure. As previous speakers mentioned, really can't hear anything. I think we can hear Peter a little better now, and could hear Commissioner DeBoe, but beyond that, didn't really hear any of the other conversations. The people on the phone are pretty clear. My name's Gary Braceley. I'm from Bend, and I've lived here 30, what, 30 years. Spent most of my life in the outdoor industry, building brands. I have several different businesses in different sectors over the years in Deschutes County. Currently, GB2, my consulting business, helps scale outdoor brands. I was a co-founder of the Oregon Outdoor Alliance, founded Bend Outdoor Works, the nation's first outdoor products accelerator. I'm a co-founder and partner in Tokyo Starfish, and I've been involved with ECO for decades. My position was, I was nominated, I've also, I guess, been on the Oregon Entrepreneur Network Board and Built Oregon Board. My position was for the economic development position. I was nominated by ECO as an economic development advisor to the council, and so I feel it's my civic duty to, you know, put in the time and try to help moderate this conversation a bit. You know, I hope to bring that experience to this issue and provide factual common sense from a business perspective and help work out some of the issues we've had.
Thank you, Gary. We're going to, unless Hunter Newbauer is on the line, and we can, we can pause for just a few seconds. Hunter, are you on the line? Were you able to call in? Okay. Sounds like he's still on route. Hunter Newbauer did call me this afternoon, and sounds like he had a emergency to attend to some of his businesses in Southern Oregon. He was driving back and was hoping that he would be in a position to call in, so he may join us later in the evening. So to our panelists, let's, let's go around the table in light of the telephone limitations. If you would just make a concerted effort to speak into the mics, and we'll hope that that transmits thoroughly for our colleagues on the phone. But Kyle, why don't we start with you, and then we'll, we'll walk our way around. Joe, you'll be next. If you would just offer those introductions as well.
All right. Thanks, Peter. Kyle Gorman, I'm the Region Manager for Oregon Water Resources Department, which is a state agency that regulates water, issues water rights, all things of use of water and quantity of water. So getting a little bit of feedback here. So Jeremy Giffen is actually the Water Master, and I noticed in the legislation, it talks about the Water Master designation in the district in which the county's housed, and so Jeremy and I flipped a coin, and he's currently in Mexico, and I am here. So, won't tell who won that toss, but anyway, I'm happy to be here, actually. I've worked in Central Oregon in water resources for over 30 years, and have, was the Water Master prior to becoming the Region Manager. And so my region covers the Deschutes Basin, the Klamath Basin, and Lake County. So I have a, a pretty broad perspective on water issues around the state, you know, particularly in the Klamath Basin. So, and the Klamath Basin is not immune to the same things that's occurring here in Deschutes County with hemp and marijuana grows and the activity that comes, goes with that. So Water Resources Department is the state agency that is the entity that issues water rights for water use. And the nexus with hemp grows and marijuana doesn't exclude that nexus and our regulation. And so it has been a significant challenge for our agency to curb illegal use, but the number one priority for water masters around the state is to stop illegal water use. And so that's our number one priority, and so marijuana, or hemp, or any other crop that happens to be illegal is our first priority to get a stop, too. Now, the laws and our ability to regulate is sometimes, takes a little bit of time, but eventually we can get to that point where the, the uses stop. And so I think coordination with law enforcement on this particular issue might, might be able to enhance our abilities to get in there and get things stopped a little bit quicker. So I'm looking forward to working with the sheriff's office and others on some real egregious situations, and if there is illegal water use, we will definitely be there. So with that, I'll pass the, pass the microphone.
Okay. Do I need to press anything? No. I'm Joe Stapleton, and I'm very new to this, but I'm happy to be here. I live in Bend. I've been here for 13 years, and most of that time I've been working in the cannabis industry. I am currently a license holder for retail in the county, and I work with another company here in Bend that has several retail licenses and a production license and an extraction license. And I don't know that I can speak specifically to goals that I have for the panel yet, but I'm very eager to hear about. The black market situation seems to be getting worse, and it directly, obviously affects my businesses and the others. And, yeah, I hope I can just offer insight into the area that I know, that know about, which is cannabis.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I'm up. My name is Mary Fleishman. I've been in, I've lived here 35 years.
I've been in, I've lived here 35 years, 28 years with the county juvenile department, and 40-plus years working with juveniles in general. My biggest concern is what is going on with our young people, and the dispensaries are doing a great job of making sure the kids aren't getting it, but they're still getting it. And my experience has been that kids are not doing well in school once they start dealing with marijuana. And it really makes me sad when I can go on the sheriff's website and see young people I worked with through the years, and they're in the adult system at this point. And those are kids that I, or now they're adults. But they were young people I worked with that had started out with marijuana and had drug issues, and there they are. So my biggest thing is looking at how we can do probably better education countywide to get young people to understand a little more about what they're getting into and get parents on board with that. And obviously, with the black market, they don't know what they're getting. So that's a big part of it. And the other cap that I wear, because I do a whole lot of conservation work, and I'm very concerned about water and how that's being misused as well. So that's, so yeah, so I'd like us just to be able to address that, and especially with the education stuff. I mean, you know, back in the day, you had the commercials with the egg in the frying pan and whatever, and that was like, that was stupid. But I think there's other ways that we can get messages to our young people, because they're not making it at school, they're not able to hold down jobs, because they're just, you know, they're stoned out of their brain. So I'd like to see if there's a way that we can deal with that.
Hi, my name's Liz Ladachinsky. I served on the Marijuana Advisory Committee, the MAC. So this is kind of quote, "old home week," although time, place, manner, as Patty mentioned, has already been decided. And I come to this panel to, with an open mind. What does our county need, and what can we spend the revenue that will be coming our way thanks to the work of the representatives? And so part of my question for the board, the white board, is how much tax is coming to Deschutes County? And is that one lump sum, once a year? Does it come quarterly? I'd also like to know where struggles are with the budgets of certain departments. So is the law enforcement of need of some extra funds in order to go out and find some of these illegal grows? Certainly, education for youth and parents to avoid illegal use of drugs is important. And, you know, instead of looking myopically at only the issues within the drug community, let's look at our community on a larger scale, and how can we help? What else can we do? So from a standpoint of, you know, what money are we talking about? And how far can that go? And maybe we have top three issues that we work on immediately, park some other possibilities for funding later on once we get those things under control and move on from there. I used to live in the county. I was a resident of Tumalo for 18 years, and about a year and a half ago, I moved into northeast Bend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Andrew Austin. I am here as representative of the public. I'm also the director of Zone 5 for Deschutes Soil and Water Conservation District. So conservation is also in the forefront of my mind. I don't have a ton of goals well-rounded as of yet, but I definitely like the idea of focusing on education, getting rid of illegal grows for conservation of water, and then also getting rid of cartel use. But at the same time, focusing on where our budget is lacking and helping improve that, just because I know there are strengths and weaknesses with all budgets. And as a member of the community, I would like to make sure that we're well-rounded and well-supported.
Great. Thank you. Panelists, as, let me just double check to see if Hunter Newbauer has had an opportunity to find a phone line. Hunter, are you on the line by chance? Waiting patiently. Okay, why don't we, well, thank you for those comments. And let me pause before we go to our next agenda topic, which is to discuss and possibly nominate someone to be considered as chairperson. But before we do that, I just want to make sure, looking to our commissioners and/or representatives, if there's any follow-up remarks or thoughts after these introductions. If there are none, we can go into the next topic.
So just a little bit of observation and kind of digesting everything being discussed here already. This is an opportunity to look at the big picture. You know, it is an opportunity to figure out, you know, it was mentioned funding, you know, who could use funding if this is going to be advisory to the commission? But also, what are we going to do about the black market and juvenile, you know, addiction issues or exposure to illegal substances? So this, the discussion can be broad. The decision points may be few, so, you know, we'll see how this all goes. But as I say, thank you very much for joining us. And this is going to be meeting quarterly for, and there's, you know, two and three-year appointments on here. So this is going to be here for a while, not regular, you know, not more than quarterly. But let's make those relationships and really do some good things for our community.
Please.
Thank you for your comments. You made me think of something else, Mary, when you were talking about our miners that are getting ahold of THC products. But we found out during the session that there's also a derived from hemp. It's called a Delta-8 project process, I think, maybe Joseph would know, or maybe familiar with it. But it also can be derived into a THC, and it was, this could be sold to miners. The way it was coming out, it was packaged in bright colors, and it could come in 800 milligrams, you know, so it was really high dose. And miners were purchasing this, and so we were made aware of it in the middle of session, and we made a hardcore to try to correct it. And so that's, this committee can also try to be nimble and try to address those issues as they come up, too, because there might be something else that we just don't know about. So I appreciate that.
The kids figure it out.
To get to Liz's, Liz's questions, I think we have, I think our representatives have some sense of how much money we're talking about and the frequency of, you know, installments or, you know. Yeah, I believe we were, the discussion was that revenue would come quarterly. And, you know, I know that, you know, Representative Krop and I talked a few times during the legislative session, and I am not remembering the exact numbers. So I don't want to, I don't want to try to put, you know, put numbers out there, but if, yeah, if either of our representatives want to speak to those, to those dollar amounts that are projected. One of the issues was that, issues are, you know, one of the, one of the circumstances or unique factors that has come up in the last couple of years is that Measure 110, which is not, does not deal with marijuana or cannabis. It deals with other controlled substances. But it takes a huge portion of the marijuana tax revenue in the state, and it puts it into treatment programs for those other substances. So the amount of, the amount of tax revenue that's generated and the amount that'll come back are very different.
So, I think it was about $400,000 to $500,000 annually, coming in quarterly. And Measure 110, it brought that down to like $100 and something thousand dollars. So it changed it drastically. So then the numbers went way down, but then the state legislature may change things around, too, because just the way it was voted on and implemented. So very high generic term, but at least it puts some scope on it. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I got the impression that conceiv, you know, like with, with some, with some fiddling, it could conceivably get up to like $200,000 per year again. But that's, it's not the $500,000 that was coming in prior.
Is there any opportunity for there to be the revenue that Deschutes County didn't collect during those two years? No.
That's history.
It was distributed to other counties.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I don't want to be the one who asks them to give back.
But, I mean, that, if there's, if that's a topic, is that right? That there was revenue generated here and distributed to other counties? Would that be unanimous decision by this group to say that probably wasn't right? Because what it was is an interpretation by the Department of Administrative Services, OLCC, finance people at the state level said, oh yeah, well, let's just stop this now, because it wasn't clear what it means when you opt out by a voter of the people. So, and then also, we can acknowledge, you know, there's some staff-type people at the table here, and some, and some community members that are ready to take positions. So, you know, for your dynamics, acknowledge who's at the table. You know, as I say, Deputy Miller may be in a different spot than Liz, you know, when you make a policy choice or a recommendation.
But I think that's at least a question worth, and I guess it is getting written down. Okay, good.
Well, the interesting thing is, I just saw the Measure 110 allocations, and there are some counties in the state that are getting zero. So I haven't had time to really dig into it yet, but, you know, to me, that really does not seem fair.
Great. Well, thank you. Please join us if somebody's on the phone.
Yeah, I was going to say, excuse me, I think it was Representative Zika brought up the Delta-8 conversation, and, you know, we might want to clarify that, you know, this is the Cannabis Advisory Panel. You know, Delta-8 is going to be a conversation coming up, but, you know, so is hemp. So just kind of wondering how broad our conversations are allowed to go. And I guess one other point is with our technology issues, and so many people not attending the meeting, if we would maybe be wise to have the chairman conversation at a later time since we can't hear all of the conversations going on. Those are my 10 cents. Out.
So people are nodding their heads yes when you mentioned the chairman conversation, but.
Chairperson.
Yes. Let me pause. Any follow-ups, or I can kind of take the ball as it's rolled, rolled maybe to me figuratively? I mean, I think that's a very good question. Obviously, our connection isn't perfect. We have, we have three, three participants on the, on the phone that are having trouble hearing us. Hopefully, I mean, we can certainly bring this back for the January meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the charter, which provides context for what this committee can discuss and offer recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. There was a question just, I think that was by Dustin Miller, about, you know, what is kind of the scope? But I think, you know, the commissioners will certainly can shed additional light on that. But if it's, you know, if it's related to cannabis, and, you know, there's, this, this group feels like it's, it's worth a conversation. I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but those comments can be relayed to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Whether they, you know, are in a position to act on or not is to be determined. But I think the way this charter's structured is to afford the conversation at least. And, you know, there's topics that we're noting, and staff plans on working with the Board of County Commissioners to set a realistic agenda every quarter. So there's, there's opportunities to have meaningful conversation and not let it get totally overwhelming. So just as we plant the seed for the election of a chair, I want to just acknowledge that you're going to have, you know, it's really to help kind of facilitate the meeting, but you're always going to have staff support, whether that's somebody working the videographer, excuse me, the videography with a videographer, someone who's taking minutes, and additional staff that are familiar with the topics that are being contemplated for that particular meeting. So I'll pause there and just get, maybe we can get a nodding of heads or an acknowledgement that it does make sense to shift the election to the chair, the conversation about that to our January meeting. But I welcome your thoughts as I look at our panelists and certainly at the commission as well.
I think that's fine, to push it until January. I also wonder, I don't know if you want to continue to participate, but perhaps it does make sense to have the chair be an outside person, more of a facilitator rather than someone who brings with him or her the biases that they come to this table with. That would be my recommendation. And since I have the microphone, what does the, what do the commissioners want to see at the conclusion of each of these quarterly meetings? Quarterly is not that frequent. So should we take one issue and try and filter it down to something that we send back to you for your consideration? And, or is it an ongoing conversa, you know, I just, my head is having a hard time wrapping around. What do we see as success? And maybe January, we can talk about that as well.
So it was a pretty, pretty simple decision when we had revenue coming from this source to go generally two ways. Addiction support services, health department, and black market, you know, pressure with, through the sheriff's office, through public safety. So that was kind of the, and the choice of how we're going to proceed. If, so that could be a discussion amongst the group, you know, are those the right priorities? I don't know if we're going to get down to the dollar amounts. It'll be a varying amount. It'll change with the legislative session. But then after that, it's, you know, each topic that comes up.
When, when do you expect those funds to start coming in?
I think by, by creating this panel, probably the ordinance was the enacting, and then having this first meeting will be on a quarterly distribution again.
We actually had this meeting early, because I think the funds will start next year. But I wanted to be sure that there was no doubt that we were not going to get those monies. So anyway, this is kind of like, you know, a preview, and then we start in, and we should be getting funding. Then, of course, you see how much is going to be cut back, so.
You think it was like a January?
Yeah, January. I do believe.
I was going to ask Peter, but I remember January as well.
And then if we have a meeting in January, maybe we'll have a really big blizzard that night. And the snow will all fall where it needs to. I mean, isn't that usually what happens? So, I mean, but we definitely need the snow, don't we, Kyle?
Zoomed in real well.
Yeah, we'll have zoomed down to a science that night.
It's funny how today actually.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not sure what our parameters are, but I'd even be open to, you know, a shorter, open working session between now and then to work a few things out. I'm not sure if that's allowed, but I think we would all be willing to get to work sooner rather than later.
That, that might make sense. I mean, if we want the panel to meet quarterly in the, over the long term, it certainly could make sense to have a little bit more frequent meetings at the beginning while everybody's getting everything figured out. One.
And what staff can do, so this is, this is Peter Gatawski. I, what staff can do is, I think this, again, as Commissioner Dare noted or reemphasized, this is really housekeeping to get the panel up and running and really addressing housekeeping-related matters. And what staff can do is, in coordination with administration, is engage the board and think about a suitable agenda topic if there is interest in bridging a meeting between now and January to ensure that 2022 starts off on a really productive light. I would remind the panel that, you know, I think you're aware, it's obviously noted in House Bill 3095, but on page one of the, of the charter, you know, there were at least three purposes, and they're somewhat open-ended about what the purpose of the panel is. But I think it may be just worth reading very quickly. You know, as, this is all informed by, by House Bill 3295, that a cap should meet quarterly and provide at least three recommendations. And those recommendations are, one, the use of money transferred to the county under the marijuana tax revenue program. What it means to, I'm sorry, I shouldn't paraphrase. Increases in public safety measures related to marijuana use and marijuana entities. Increases in public safety measures related to marijuana use and marijuana entities in the county. And then issues presented by the industry itself, processing, production, wholesaling, and distribution that are subject, you know, in our case, to rural Deschutes County. So, again, that's, that's, those are the anchor points, I think, that, that at least as, as staff was drafting the charter and coordinating with the board to, to get it in a final, final product. But, you know, you may want to think about how to leverage those at a minimum and then as they branch out, you know, and evolve. And this committee is certainly well-suited to discuss those and offer comments and perspectives to the Board of County Commissioners. So, I don't know if there's any follow-up thoughts about, about just that aspect of the charter as articulated in House Bill 3295.
Maybe each of us should vote on one of those, and quorum says that's our January topic. The first one that you read is very broad, money's coming into the county. Second one is law enforcement. And I know I would like to learn more from Deputy Miller on what challenges the Sheriff's Department has with enforcement and then the, the businesses. So, I mean, for me, if I'm going to vote, I would say number two, enforcement.
Well, it's not something that, you know, we can, why don't we, why don't we, I think that's a great starting point by Liz Luchensky. Luchensky, why don't we just think about that? I mean, we don't have to make a decision this moment, but this might be a good time where we're just a few minutes before seven. If everyone is, feels like they're, they're ready to continue, I would suggest we, we let Adam Smith talk about the public meetings and conflicts of interest law because that is going to be important. Just, we do this for every commission, every, you know, every member of our planning, new member of our Planning Commission, our Historic Landmarks Commission, and others receives a similar type of, of overview and set of materials. So, if everybody feels comfortable, we could do that. And then, you know, you know, as we bring the meeting kind of to a close, we can talk about what, what sounds reasonable for building an agenda for, for January of 2022. How does, how does that sound to everybody? And I don't, for those on the phone, hopefully you were able to, to hear those remarks. Let me, let me check in with you on our, our phone lines if, if you have any follow-up thoughts before we switch over to Adam Smith, our Assistant Legal Counsel. Okay. Either, either they support it or they're not hearing us, so, one or the other.
So, I can hear you. Put my phone off of mute. I did hear the majority of what you explained, so, and I agree with you.
Commissioner Chang?
I was just going to suggest.
This is, this is Jason Cup. I can hear what's being discussed.
I was just going to suggest, maybe we put Adam near one of those, those little microphones. You can go sit up on the dais, Adam, so, just, just so that our, our, the, the members of our panel that are joining us by phone, you know, get the, get a hundred percent.
Good evening, everybody. One quick note, we're coming up on nine quarters since we've received a distribution. We will be eligible for distributions again in January. My recollection is we received those distributions in arrears. So, once we're into 2022, there will be a few months before we're actually seeing money. So, when we're talking topics and urgency of meetings and those kinds of things, keep it, keep it in mind. We should have some time before we're actually seeing some real dollars again. So, turning to what I was asked to talk about today. First of all, for the people on the phone, if you cannot hear me and you would like to give me a call, please feel free to do so. I'll try and reach out to Hunter separately and go through these things. There's a couple of things that everybody on the, the panel should just be aware of going forward. Second, these are, these are just the basics. I'm hoping to spend no more than five, 10 minutes tonight. There are exceptions, there's nuances. If, if there's ever any questions or issues that come up, please do not hesitate to call me, email me. As Peter noted, there are a number of us who are staff support for this group. I'm one of those, those, this staff members who is at your disposal. So, we can certainly talk through all these things going forward. And like I said, this is just the basics. It can get a little bit more complicated. So, first, I know some of you, Mr. Gorman already knows, I'm sure that he's a public official, but for the other members of the public, congratulations, you are officially a public official under Oregon state law. Welcome to the club. That means that there are some rules and some things that you have to be aware of that are very particular, and most of them have to do with money. So, as, as a now-appointed public official representing Deschutes County's interests, you have to be aware of conflicts of interest. There are two types of conflicts of interest in Oregon, an actual conflict of interest or a potential. The difference is would or could. It's an actual conflict of interest if you will benefit financially from a decision that you are helping make. A potential conflicts of interest is if you could benefit financially from a decision you're helping to make. An actual conflict of interest, you must disclose that conflict. And usually, you're not supposed to participate in that, that decision, that recommendation, unless there's a rare exception where we can't meet a quorum, which I don't expect necessarily with this group. A potential conflict of interest, you disclose your conflict, but then you can continue participating. There are several members of the panel who are, of course, representing marijuana businesses in Deschutes County. Some of the decisions conceivably could directly impact your business and therefore could be actual or potential conflicts of interest. When we get to those issues, let's have sidebar conversations. Let's dig a little deeper into those financial interests and, and see if it's appropriate for you participating after disclosure. If on some very specific topics, it's best if you just stay out of those conversations just because of those ethical rules. Any, any questions, concerns, conflicts of interest?
Oh, sorry. I'm not thinking I will have any or could have any, but who do we disclose to?
To the group as a whole and to the public. So, it would be a disclosure at the beginning of a meeting, and it's very common. And please, of course, if you, you feel like you may need to be disclosing, you could call me ahead of time. We could talk through procedure and decorum and how you go about doing that. But it's a, it's a disclosure at the beginning of the meeting, hey, I have a potential conflict of interest in this conversation. That's sufficient. If it's just a potential, and then you can proceed. If it's an actual conflict of interest, then it's quite common for somebody to disclose they have that conflict of interest and then abstain from participating further. So, it would just be at this meeting, it's just the beginning of a topic. So, second, gifts. You now, as public officials, have to be mindful of gifts. You, and I kind of work through a four-step process to see if the gift could be problematic because of your work now with Deschutes County. First, if you're receiving any gift, you should, you know, know the source of the gift. And you can pretty much immediately not necessarily worry if it's a Christmas gift from a family member or any of those other kind of things. But if you're receiving a gift from something that's odd or unusual or a business, a business in town, or it's just something that's coming to you that's unexpected, you know, you should really proceed to that second question and really trying to understand if the, the entity or the person who's giving you a gift has a legislative or administrative economic interest in your decision. If you are receiving something from an entity or a person that has some kind of economic interest in the work that we are doing here, then you need to proceed to that, or that third step, which is the amount of the gift. How much is the gift worth? If it's more than $50 in the aggregate per calendar year, then you need to call me. And we're going to go through a list of exceptions together and see if any of those exceptions apply to allow you to accept that gift. If at any of those four steps prior to that, we're not answering yes, then you can accept the gift. So, if it's less than $50 in the aggregate, if it's not coming from somebody with an economic interest in the, the work of this panel, then you're fine. Of course, you can accept the gift. So, that will, should cover, you know, all of the birthday presents, Christmas presents, all of those other, other kinds of things. Last piece on this, in this context, a gift is described as something that is not made available to the general public as a whole. So, if somebody's offering you a discount on something or, you know, something that's just not being offered to everybody universally, if it's being, being given to you and it may have a link back to this, to this panel, you need to be mindful of some of those things and go through that steps. Any questions on gifts? Those are really the two. We'll talk about public meetings here in a minute, but I just wanted to start with those two because those are some areas where there's some gotchas where you can be, you can get in trouble yourself personally, and you can be personally liable for some of those things. So, that's why I really wanted to start with those conflicts of interest and those gift issues that come up. So, last topic that I just wanted to mention, this is a public body. The, the county staff provided in your packet a very long, helpful, quick study on public meetings in Oregon and why we have public meetings. The, the basics are the, the business of government should occur in, in the forefront and with the public participation. We, we don't do things behind closed doors and cigar smoke-filled rooms anymore. The whole idea is to bring these things out into the light of day and to conduct our business as a government with the public's participation, with the public's knowledge, and with their full consent of that business being discussed. And so, this advisory panel very much falls into that mindset of conducting its business in public. So, a couple of quick things to go through. What is a meeting? Well, a meeting for these purposes is emails, phone calls, Zoom meetings, a hybrid meeting as we're doing today. All of these ways in which the business of this panel is being discussed is, under the law, a meeting. It is not restricted to just being face-to-face with somebody. Email conversations, text messages back and forth. All of these things can constitute public meetings under the law. The issue you need to be aware of is when you are discussing the business of the panel and it is with a quorum or more of the participants. So, the Deschutes County Commissioners have it tough. With only three people on the, the county commissioners, with only three county commissioners, a quorum is two of them. Any conversation that the county commissioners have about the official business of the county is supposed to be through and during a public meeting. Because this is a much larger panel, there's a little bit of flexibility and there are opportunities for you to discuss the, the work of the panel offline. But I have to encourage you and do a little foot stomping there. You have to be very mindful of the numbers. It so often happens that an email, there's an email between two panel members, for example, that is forwarded to somebody else, forwarded to a couple other people, and somebody responds. And all of a sudden, that conversation that began with just two people became a public meeting because of the cumulative participation of the panel members. So, be careful with those kinds of conversations that are not happening in the public forum. You got to shut it down and ensure from the outset that it doesn't include enough members to, to constitute a public meeting. So, what is quorum for this group? It's a little bit complicated because of the Board of County Commissioners' participation. I would recommend that if you're having any meeting with more than four people, that you're, you're in, you're constituted in quorum for public meetings purposes. And you should shut it down and move that meeting into the next quarterly official public meeting that we have here. Right? And the, the reason why I'm saying it's complicated with the quorum is I expect that perhaps going forward, the county commissioners may appoint one of them to participate. And so, that will change the quorum numbers. If all three participate, it changes the quorum numbers. So, I'm recommending going with the, the minimum number that we could ever pretty much add up to, which would be four of eight. That would constitute the quorum.
Adam, I mean, when we discussed this on the, on the board, I think there was a general interest in if one of us participated long-term. It, it's still being sort of an ex officio kind of role, you know, not a voting member of the panel. It would, does that still, does, do we still have an impact on quorums if, if we're not, if we're not voting members?
No, and that's why even if we're not counting the county commissioners as all, at all, because they're just ex officio members, the majority of the eight remaining members would still be four. If we're counting the one county commissioner, then it's, would be nine members for, excuse me, five would be the majority. We're still covered at four. So, that's why I'm recommending, until, until it's more solidified and the county commissioner's participation is understood, I would, just for safety sake and to ensure that we're, we're all protected here, watch out for conversations of four or more. And then last, it is not a public meeting unless you're discussing business of the, the panel itself. So, if you, if, if five of you having to all be at the same event, it, it doesn't necessarily mean it's all of a sudden a public meeting. Nobody has to go home and not participate in the Christmas party or any of those other kind of things. But you do need to be careful to not discuss the business of the Cannabis Advisory Panel. That's, that's the safety. If unintentionally you find yourselves with more than four people in the, in the same, in the same social gathering, just, you know, lock down the conversation so you're keeping it on social niceties and then we're all protected. Any questions on just those few things? Again, this is just very quick things. My intention is to just raise some topics for some of you who are perhaps new to some of the, the government operations and how these things apply. I have numerous cards. I'm at your disposal. If anything comes up over your course of time working with Deschutes County, please don't hesitate to call me. This is part of the reason I'm here is to help you work through these things and the awkwardness that may come up. Can get a lot more complicated, but if we stick to these high points, then it's usually pretty simple to manage. Yes, of course.
As, as a business owner, if I was advocating for more funds for law enforcement to combat black market and that would possibly drive up sales at a, at a retail location I have, would that be a conflict of interest?
I think there is a distinct possibility that that is at least a potential conflict of interest. And depending on how closely connected it would be, could even be an actual conflict of interest. It's really the difference between the, the would and the could and how certain are we that the law enforcement activities would curtail black market, which would then improve your business. Again, as I noted, most of the time, the way these panels are structured, we're not necessarily going to encounter these conflict of interests here. With the way the state statute set up this particular panel, we're going to encounter this at some point. And I very much suspect that you and I and, and Hunter and I will probably have some conversations about how to handle these things going forward.
Well, and I'd like to respond a little bit. So, that's not a bad thing. I mean, just by you asking that question already, that's a perceived possible conflict in the future, and you're already discussing it in an open public meeting. So, I mean, you've already kind of defused the first step of that by saying, hmm, I wonder if there could be a conflict there. So, and then, you know, you just keep bringing it up if you're ever voting on a very specific item.
With, with your particular circumstances, especially with the state statute denoting that you should be part of this, and the reason you're part of this is because you have an economic interest in these conversations. It does, so, to be frank, I'm not a hundred percent positive on if it's an actual or potential. And as we're exploring these issues going forward, we may even want to ask for an ethics opinion from the Attorney General to get some clarity on this particular issue. The situation you brought up is on the nose with some of the issues that I've been scratching my head on. Is that an actual or a potential where you can disclose and still participate? If you're prevented from ever participating, it kind of defeats the purpose of you being on the panel in the first place. And as I said, state statute declared that we should have representatives from marijuana business owners in our community. So, we, we got to find a way to work through that issue or it's, it's senseless to have you on the panel. So, I, like I said, I expect that the, you and Hunter and I will all be talking through some of these issues going forward.
Should I jump in? If you're going to advocate for something against something that's illegal, I think you're going to be safe.
Okay.
Honestly, yeah.
Right.
Let's hope so, anyway. Seems to make the most sense.
But better to be safe than sorry.
For sure. Okay. To echo Representative's point, absolutely, always defer to, to disclosure. Like, don't, these are not the areas where we want to be looking for loopholes where it comes to public meetings laws, gifts, or anything else. Err on the side of safety. Disclose, don't accept the gift, shut down the email conversation. It's far better for us to, to just put everything out. It's far better for us to, uh, to just put everything out there in the eyes of the public, and hey, this is what's going on, let's work through it, and then almost always, we will be, uh, the outcome will be better if we handle our business that way. Uh, and last, um, please also feel free, if you have any questions about the, the mechanics of how the opt-out has occurred, or what that is done with the funding, or any of those other kind of things, like, uh, Peter or Tanya, we're all intimately involved with what has occurred the last couple of years, and I'm happy to have any conversations about those things as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
As Adam's, uh, kind of rearranging, uh, coming back over to the other side of the, the meeting room, a couple other things that we've found work well, uh, for other advisory bodies. You might find something that's useful, or interesting, or related to this cannabis advisory panel. If you send it to staff, if you send it to me, or Tanya, or, or the representative, we can forward it to the cannabis advisory panel, minimizing that unintended consequence will, where, you know, if you send it directly to the, to the panelists, and then all of a sudden there's a follow-up, hey, that was a great point, and then, you, all of a sudden, you create your own kind of, uh, uh, correspondence or, or conversation, and the moment it, you get, you exceed that, that, that threshold, which becomes a quorum, it becomes a public meeting. So, uh, the safest thing to do is if you find something you want to share, send it to staff, and then we'll, we'll blast it off. Hey, you know what, this, you know, Joe Stapleton, uh, found this article that was interesting about topic X, we're forwarding it on his behalf. So that can just, again, minimize those unintended consequences of having a de facto meeting with email conversations. The other thing that I would, uh, just acknowledge as well, structurally, I don't know if you, you saw, but it's noted in the memorandum that staff created a cannabis advisory panel website. So it has the membership and the charter, and House Bill 3295, and the order that created this, this panel. But it also has a, a general cannabis advisory panel email, and that email, just for your understanding, is noted in the memo, will come to me and Tanya, and then similarly, if it's something that, sometimes you get spam, but if it's something related to, to this, of course, if it's related to this panel, we'll forward it to you. And then, you know, um, can work with, with the panel at large about if there's something that should be included, or a part of a broader conversation for a subsequent meeting. So just, we want, we plan on keeping the website active, it'll have the, the meeting agendas, the, the packet at large, the, the approved minutes, so that the public, um, can track the conversations that are occurring. So we're at 7:15, I don't know if anybody would like a, is anybody interested in a few-minute break to go to the bathroom? Are, are we, do we feel like we're ready to kind of charge forward? Well, what I would offer for this group's consideration, again, I don't know if we need the full 45 minutes, um, again, this was just to establish the structural kind of integrity of the panel, but what I heard is, you know, we know that there's great interest in, in rolling up this figuratively, everyone's sleeves, and start talking about, uh, the Deschutes County's marijuana program as it pertains to House Bill 3295. And what I heard were kind of three prominent themes. One is education's, not, not in any particular order, but education is a very prominent theme about, uh, alerting parents and, and the youth, uh, and, and others about what it means to have a, a, uh, a substance like marijuana, which is legal and regulated in Oregon and in rural Deschutes County. And so, uh, one topic, you know, for consideration could be, what are we doing, what is the county doing now, or public health doing now as it relates to education? The other is, and, and, and Joe just brought it up hypothetically, um, relating to Adam's, uh, presentation to conflicts of interest, is what are we doing now about enforcement? What do we know about the black market? What are some of the trials and tribulations and success stories that our law enforcement has experienced? Um, that, that, that alone could, could be a topic, or some, some offshoot of that. And then the third piece is, is the revenue component. Um, uh, and, you know, uh, knowing how much we receive informs how it can be, how this group can guide the board or offer recommendations about, uh, options for, for how that money can be best leveraged. And so, uh, one topic for, for the group is, a- again, if you want to identify, uh, any one of those, those themes, what we thought of as staff constructively is, we would work with the Board of County, our thought was, we would work with the board, um, prior to every quarterly meeting, to make sure that we had shored up a reasonable agenda that fits within a two-hour period, that possibly has keynote speakers, has background information. So this conversation for the, you know, maybe for the next 15 to 30 minutes, if you have something that really resonates with you, that would provide that initial investment in Ja- for the January meeting, staff can then work with our colleagues to build that agenda, of course, in collaboration with administration and the Board of County Commissioners, to make sure that this seems reasonable again for the next topic. So that's a lot to consider, but I offer it for your consideration if that's helpful, and I certainly welcome, we welcome any input that the commissioners or representatives may have as well.
I think getting more information specific about, you know, I mean, not what you read in the paper, but from enforcement's, um, their perspective, what are they seeing, um, what are their limitations? Um, just getting more boots on the ground, kind of understanding of what's going on in there, is there specific areas, or whatever, but just kind of getting a better picture of what that looks like. Um, because otherwise, I know for myself, I just know what I see on the news or read the paper, it doesn't tell me a whole lot.
Uh, I'd, I'd just like to, uh, you know, get a better sense of the amount of money that would be, um, funneled towards Deschutes County in conjunction with, uh, a sense of how much money is being spent on current programs, so that we could, uh, understand, you know, the enhancement of that additional funds in the programs that are already existing. And so, you know, without that context, you don't really know what you can do, you know, is, is, can we hire one more sheriff, or can we hire five? And, uh, you know, what kind of programs are out there? So I think one of the first steps I would like to know is, you know, what, what kind of dollar value are we, are we looking at?
I, I agree with Kyle. I would like to know, um, how much are we spending on the cannabis already through law enforcement, as well as, um, treatment? I know that it was mentioned that Measure 110, uh, most of the money goes toward treatment of other, is, other hard, harder dr- hard drugs, or drugs in general, but how much money is going toward treatment for marijuana in Deschutes County already, as well as law enforcement, so that we could focus on, um, loose ends?
I'm also wondering, um, the stores up here, you know, and the cities have the 3% local tax, it, Deschutes County doesn't have that local tax, is there a reason for that? I mean, this goes directly against my financial interest, but I, it's just been curious to know if, if anyone knows why there, there is no local tax.
Don't let them know that.
I, I thought that, I thought for cities to have additional local taxes, they had to have passed that before statewide legalization of recreational marijuana, but I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
Well, what we can, if, if, what we can do, I mean, the, the three or four remarks that have just been made, what we can do, I mean, is, uh, coordinate with our colleagues, and, and a- again, with the support of, of admin and the county commissioners, is, uh, we want to make sure, I think what's critical is that we manage your quarterly meetings productively, and if we're not careful, we're, it's gonna, the cup's gonna overflow. And so, um, what, you know, if, if, these were, we've got some great ideas about the amount of money today that's been, that's being channeled or leveraged to, that, that deals with, with enforcement, education, and, and treatment, we, I, I don't, to me, that's something that we could, that's a fact-finding, uh, uh, exercise, that shouldn't be too difficult, that could be captured in a, in a, in a memorandum, and, uh, i- if appropriate, we could have some representatives, uh, you know, speak on behalf of, of those themes of, of enforcement, of education, which likely may also transition to treatment. So we could, we could start with that and, and, and try to build an agenda. I just want to be mindful that, um, we want to make sure there's, there's times for, for questions and engagement, and, um, and so we'll figure it out as we go, but we'll, we'll, I think we'll want to proceed responsibly to make sure that it, it leads to a dynamic conversation. The other thing that's not lost on me for the January quarterly meeting, again, with colleagues of yours that, that are on the phone, is we'll want to do, do introductions again, um, and, uh, and, and, you know, certainly at some point, whether it's in January or at a subsequent meeting, but as the, the third issue that's, I just want to make sure that those representatives on the phone have the opportunity, we need to hear from them about what their items are, what are their issues. And a few of them, you know, Gary Broselin and Hunter Newbauer, um, do have ties to the industry, and they may also have additional perspectives that we want to record. So that would be part of that agenda as well. But, um, I offer that for your consideration and, and any other remarks, but I think that's enough for us to, to begin building.
Yeah, Peter, let me just offer a, a couple thoughts. One, I think, uh, what's gonna be important at the January meeting is to provide some estimates about how much money we're gonna be receiving and when. Um, so we, so getting back to that key question, looking at where are we spending money today? And then the next key piece, I think, is gonna be, so what, so what are the gaps, or what does additional funding buy us? In, in other words, is the sheriff's office say, look, what we could, hey, we're good. Of course, we know that's not the case. They would really like to have one more deputy, or one more investigator, or detective, or whatever the case may be, or with the, the health services, or community justice. What would additional funds buy, buy us? And so, it, to, to wrap that into a January meeting, I think, would be, it, it's a lot, but it's, it's a good and it's a necessary conversation. Then, maybe it's March, where the, the, the cannabis advisory panel provides some recommendations to the board, which is right at the start of the, of the county's budget process, because the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee will then, uh, consider the budget recommendations as a package in, in late May, and county administration, uh, finance, et cetera, will make our recommendations in April. So maybe it, kind of, as we begin to think about January, also think about, and rather than all the way into April, maybe the, the next one is in March, to think about what recommendations to make, with, that would then inform the, the budget process.
I know, um, Dustin can probably help us, because when I went on the first drug bust, they actually had the state police there with a piece of equipment that was doing the testing of all the products they were bringing in from the field, and I believe that cost about $35,000. And I don't know, Dustin, if you, if you can, um, clarify if the, you know, how's our local people, have they bought that same piece of equipment? Because it seemed really great that you could, like, you know, go get all these plants, test them, and you knew right then and there what you were doing. So, um, I know that, that could be really important. It was, I mean, it was a huge team of people, because you've got Bend PD, you've got the state police there, um, and then the one that we went on over in, um, at Alfalfa, I don't think they had a clue how big that was gonna be. I mean, you know, just from taking pictures, I had, overhead, but you know, I, what, there were like 49, um, greenhouses. Oh, Nick, you were there that day? It was really, um, it was overwhelming.
Yeah.
Dustin, do we have that piece of equipment now?
Yeah, we do, um, we actually have purchased two of them, and, uh, it was about $33,000 for two of them, the sheriff's office has purchased those. They have come in, I actually used one today, a couple times, so very useful piece of equipment. Uh, we used it on our last grow, um, but yeah, it is available, and we are using it now.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter, this is, oh, sorry, Peter, this is Jason, can I go back and answer the expected revenue question? I, I was doing some digging, and I think I found the answer to that question.
Please.
So, um, I had the Department of Revenue run some numbers for me, and just to ballpark what that revenue would look like, and so, if this was, there was an effect right now, they, they projected right around $47,000 a quarter. Um, that's based on revenue distribution, there's, some of the marijuana revenue goes to all the counties, and the counties split it based on how many square feet of grow they have, and how many retail licenses they have, so it's a ratio depending on how much total revenue there is, and then where we sort of stack up to compare to other counties based on how many licenses we have. So, um, that number could grow as marijuana grows, but as other counties add more licenses, our share might diminish a little bit. Um, so based on current distributions and the Measure 110 distributions, they estimate this year would be right around $47,000 a quarter.
Great, thank you.
One more comment, sorry. I, I put in a, a request for an opinion from our Legislative Council to see if there's a process and that we could go retroactive. The bill will not be retroactive, but if we could try to get reimbursed for that lost revenue for the last two years, uh, as soon as I get, I'm sure it's not gonna happen tonight, but if I get, when I get that opinion back, I'll, I'll forward it over to you.
Thank you.
Uh, the number of licenses does not, is not including those that are within Bend City proper, is that right? Or any license within the county of Deschutes counts as revenue that we pull in?
Uh, unincorporated Deschutes County.
Only unincorporated.
It's, uh, the number of licenses in the square footage, depending on the type of marijuana business, and unincorporated Deschutes County dictates our share.
Okay. So any Bend retail stores not including?
I don't believe that they are.
Okay.
So some of that financial that we've been talking about, or breaking down some of the, the questions we had, I mean, that could be like a packet that we could get before a meeting to be able to review, so we could be, even if somebody presented, we would be prepared to be able to ask questions.
Yeah, great point, uh, Mary Fleishman, uh, that, that we could, yes, definitely strive to get that packet out early. You know, a lot, our conventional approach is about a week out, but we certainly, depending on the materials and the substance, you know, we could, we could shoot for getting it out several weeks, uh, in advance, you know, so there's adequate time to review it and, and be prepared for the subsequent conversations with those representatives, as Nick noted, whether it's community justice, or public health, or from law enforcement, that then builds off a, a meeting that could occur in March, uh, you know, for some observations or recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners in terms of what, what it means to have, you know, just, let's just round up approximately $200,000 a year in marijuana revenue. Listener?
I just wanted to, to, uh, when we were, when Nick was laying out some of the information that could be presented, or the story that could be told at the next meeting, um, I, I think it'd be useful not just to say, what are we spending right now, but also to go one, yeah, one stage even farther back to, back when we were getting $400,000 or $500,000 of revenue, how are we using it? And then talk about what we're doing right now as essentially backfilling, you know, because we're, you know, when, when we were getting $400,000 or $500,000 a year, uh, we were sending a certain amount of, of, of dollars over to, uh, support Detective Miller and his team. And we're not, you know, at the, at the current moment, we're not getting that, um, so we're backfilling that in certain ways, and then when we start receiving this 188 or 200,000, uh, again, that'll give us a chance to sort of, um, unbackfill some of, some of that.
The sheriff actually picked it up this last year. It was, I think we, didn't we ask him for like 100,000 or something? I remember, and he said he would, he would definitely pick it up. He didn't want to lose the code enforcement team.
Yes, we can certainly provide that information, and, and it changed from the first year to the second year, and then it wasn't much beyond that, that the opt-out, we haven't received it. But yes, we can, we could certainly tell that story as well. And that's, yeah, great information there.
So we have a sense of what we're trying to build back to, basically.
Anybody else on the phone? Gary, or Detective Miller, any, any, any comments as we, I bring this kind of meeting as we head to the finish line? Just want to hear you, any, any thoughts or perspectives you have, um, on the line?
I'm, I'm here, I, uh, I'm still having a hard time copying some of the conversation just because it is broken, um, but I'm, I think I'm maintaining pretty good. I'd rather have this meeting in person, next time I want to make it a point to be there in person, so I can track a little bit better, but, um, I don't have anything else to add. Yeah, I too, uh, am having some trouble. Yeah, I too am having some troubles following the side conversations. The main speakers were pretty clear. And, you know, I just think, yeah, our three objectives in the charter, you know, the finance issues, obviously, you know, will be quite in-depth. But, you know, public safety is a pretty broad topic and obviously, industry issues will be a pretty broad topic. So I think there's going to be quite a bit for us to work through. And, yeah, the sooner we could, you know, get that budget information and the packets you're talking about, maybe the numbers of licenses, you know, in the unincorporated areas and all of that packet of info, you know, as I said, I would be available if there was a working meeting that we can have within our parameters prior, so maybe we could work through some of that and be more effective in starting January. But it sounds like we have a lot to work on.
Great, thank you for those remarks. Let me look at, as I look at our panel, any closing remarks as we wind up our first kickoff meeting of this cannabis advisory panel?
I do have a question. Would you prefer us to send emails to that cannabis advisory panel email address that you've set up or should it go to you directly?
Great question. I would let the cannabis advisory panel email be available. That's, that's really designed for the public.
Okay.
If you have information or comments or questions you want to send to staff, you can send them to me directly.
And then staff has been very helpful in being available. We may not know all of their names and email addresses and phone numbers, so could we get a list of staff that is here to support us?
Absolutely. And I, that conversation, I think, is also going to be occurring with the Board of County Commission, just in terms of which, which department, whether it's the Community Development Department or an admin, that, just to be honest, that remains
Right.
a work in progress. Again, CDD is happy to be in this position, especially in this interim role, to help set it up since we, we staff several committees on a regular basis. But we can, we will certainly keep this panel up to date on how, who its support staff is and how best to convene and communicate those issues that will inform subsequent panel agendas.
And finally, in deference to, in deference to Adam, is it possible for us to get names, contact numbers and phone numbers for the members of the panel, recognizing that we cannot do quorum meetings, but if we have a one-off question, it might be helpful for a phone conversation? So just in deference to what you told us about?
No objection from my part. Of course, you can have each other.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to reach out to all the panel members to see if we?
Yeah. And for those that are listening online that may not have heard that, the question was being able to receive the personal emails and phone numbers from the cannabis advisory panelists, if it's acceptable to reach out one-on-one, if there's follow-up questions or comments. And the answer is that information can definitely be made available. So I will send it to the panelists. I, there's, I have a sheet that acknowledges the staff, the panelists, and I conclude, you know, everybody here on that. So it's a one or two-page contact list that you can, you can keep and reference as needed.
Yeah. The only nuance is one thing that as a staff level, what we really try not to do is to provide any of your contact information to the public, because you're private citizens, most of you are, with personal emails and telephones. And so we're, we try to, we, with the Planning Commission, with the Landmarks Commission, we'd be, we're very respectful of your privacy. So it's kind of that, it's that balancing act of what, you know, we can put the names and the terms, for example, on the website, and then we can share with you, for example, if you're, but I would only say we would provide the emails and/or telephone numbers for members that are comfortable providing it. And generally, it works well with our other appointed commissions. We just want to respect your privacy as well.
Kyle?
Thanks and I apologize for folks. This isn't a closing remark. It's actually a somewhat of a background question for you. I always think about never trying to reinvent the wheel, but you use the word colleagues and I, that made me think of all the other counties around the state. And do the other counties have a similar cap? And how, what progress have they made? Are we leading the way? And so they're going to be looking to us for our expertise and experience? Or can we do it the other way around?
I believe you are the lead ship here. I don't think there's any others. Because Deschutes County was the only one to opt out and this is how we just created this.
I see.
Oh, no pressure.
But I, but I'm also under the impression that there are cannabis advisory panels like this in operation in southwest Oregon. And, you know, just because they didn't opt out, like they did, they set up panels without the need to, without the need to secure the revenue, but I think they have panels that are involved in allocation out of the revenue.
Yeah. I believe there's, there's some cities that do have panels there.
Let me look to our representatives for any, any, any closing remarks and then I'd like to turn it over to our commissioners for their remarks as well. So Commissioner, or excuse me, Representative Croft, are you still on the line? Any, any closing remarks as we bring this first meeting to an end?
Yeah, just, I want to say thank you again to everybody for being here tonight and participating. And I look forward to these discussions. I think they're going to be very helpful for our community. I just want to thank everybody for their time.
Thank you, Representative, yeah, Representative Zika.
Yeah, just the same. Thank you for being here and participating and putting your name in the hat. I really appreciate that. You know, it takes a lot to serve in a public committee and it takes up your time and your personal time, so I really appreciate you doing that. And just watch out, once they know that you volunteered, they'll start asking you to be on a lot more committees, so.
Mr. Chairman, I turn it back over to you.
So just a little bit of business. Let's acknowledge, according to the published agenda, 740 for public comments, so we can take a moment. And I don't think there's any public in the room, making sure there's nobody on the phone, though. Is there anybody on the phone that we might have missed that's been waiting for a public Seeing none. Also, we do have a recording of audio and video of this meeting. So if this was a Zoom meeting, there could be the raised hand feature and public comment or possibly participation via Zoom. So we're missing that whole technology layer tonight. But also, this will be uploaded to the website or available in our public meetings at some point. So that's, we do have some room, cameras in the room and some videographer working back there. Also, one of the concepts that was provided was the concept of community development department or administration possibly managing this meeting, staffing this meeting. So this is a discussion, I think Commissioner Chang brought it up first, and that's, community development is land use, the permits associated with building a house or the land use associated with development. And then this is a policy slash financial discussion possibly, so maybe it should be under administration. So we kind of left that open for now. So it's being staffed like a planning commission meeting is kind of what it feels like tonight. So there, it could change in the future. So, and your guidance on that may be helpful, too. You know, how much of this is kind of the black and white of the dollars associated with the revenue? How much of this is, you know, the community engagement about the topic? Are there going to be people that really follow this or not? We'll find out. How much of this is going to be, you know, that split world we saw, no matter what we did for a couple of years, you know, there was two sides of the story and it just wasn't coming together. So that's what I saw. So those are my comments. I don't know if there's anything else.
No, I do want to thank everyone, but it does show you tonight how good, it's so much better if everyone is in the room. Truly, this was, I'm so sorry that it didn't work out well, but it wasn't Sharon's fault. Hopefully, everyone can be in the room next time. It was someone that cut the line. That's, that's what we heard, right? So, but do, I do thank you. I appreciate, and, you know, it seems so, you know, $47,000 a quarter seems pretty immaterial. Hopefully, that number's going to go up higher, you know, we'll have to see. But I appreciate. So thank you and let's hope we can be in the room in January or a big blizzard. Well, we need that moisture, don't we, Kyle?
Yeah, we need the water.
Yeah, but I advocate for snow in the mountains and rain here.
Yes, so do I.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone as well. I look forward to working with this group. And I, when, when we were just talking about all the panelists having each other's contact information, I hope that we will include all the commissioners' contact information there. And whether in this panel setting or just kind of individually one-on-one, if you have any, any issues you want to discuss, any questions you want to ask that we might be able to help with, I think we're available. So thank you.
Thank you.
And along those lines, I mean, two people can get together and solve the world's problems at lunch or whatever, but you got to just sell it to the rest of the group. So, but I mean, I'm available for that, too. You know, direct conversations about any of this. You know, let's make sure to communicate when the topics come through.
Well, seeing that all the, all the comments have been conveyed and Adam has, I'm seeing Adam has some business cards that he will make available and we'll make sure that those are available for those that were unable to attend today in January. So here we are at 7:44 and we'll conclude the initial inaugural cannabis advisory panel. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance and participation.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Justin.